Talk to order. It's please mute. The time is 11:02 on Monday, June 15, 2020. Meeting is being held remotely using this virtual meeting platform. Okay, Chairperson of the Commission on the Arts and Humanities. I'm going to call the roll. Mariah, I think Mariah is not here. Simtala Ermo.
I'm here.
Jose. Quanise. Joy. Here.
Hey.
I'm here.
Kay Miller.
I have to make the meeting because there's a special condition right now. I'm having to.
Jackie. Jay.
Oh.
Stacy.
Congratulations.
I'm here. I'm here.
Good to do. Edmund. All right.
Okay. Okay.
Kimber.
Okay. Sunday, Friday.
Natalie.
Yeah.
Someone is on the telephone. They're speaking to someone and you're hearing it.
What time is it?
Brian, I think that may be you. You might need to mute. You might need to mute. I'm hearing a lot of papers being shuffled and people. I'm going to go back over a few names I didn't hear from. Jose. Alma. Chinadu. Edmund. Derek. Kimber. Mary Ann. Cora. And Natalie. I thought I saw and heard Mary Ann earlier.
Yeah, she was on mute. Natalie's here too. Natalie's here too.
Did you all say here, Mary Ann?
I'm.
Patrick must have muted us.
Okay, thank you. And Natalie? Is there anyone else? Of course, you can't tell me if you didn't know.
There's a lot of.
Edmund?
Yes.
Derek? Kimber? Alma?
Can you mute the phones, please?
We, Chinadu?
Yes.
So we do have a quorum. Okay. This is a special meeting of the Commission called by the Chairperson of the Commission in accordance with D.C. Official Code 39205B in Commission Bylaws Article V, Section 7. The purpose of this special meeting is the discussion and consideration of portions of the Commission's enabling statutes related to the agency's grant-making authority. The meeting is held in open session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Notice of the meeting was posted on the agency's website and on the government's online central meeting calendar. Many members of the public joining us today. We will. Before we proceed, I would like to read the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and the mentality of generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life. And some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across the barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral land of the Natchitochke and the Pisgahawee people. We pay respects to their elders, past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of the Arts Commission, of this Arts Commission. Thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to say that it's the Natchitochke and the Pisgahawee nations. So I just wanted to make sure you pronounce it correctly.
I'm clearly going to have to work on that. Thank you. It caught me by surprise today. Rona, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you, as Chair of the Ad-Hoc Committee.
Thank you. First of all, I would just want to say about the good news that just came down from the Supreme Court. Everyone has to be really joyful about that. And yay! So that's the best news we've heard from the court in a 6-3 decision in years. So I'm just really.
State now, Rona? What's the news?
Oh, I'm sorry. The Supreme Court just voted and overturned all, most of Trump's health care for LGBTQ community. It voted 6-3 that it's unconstitutional to discriminate. So it's phenomenal news. It's just really, and Roberts and Gretchen voted in a majority, which is really good news. So I want to start out with good news. That's just phenomenal. Today, we're going to discuss the preamble, the introduction for our legislative amendments. We're going to discuss capital projects, facilities, and buildings. We're going to discuss NACOC. And we're going to just start with the, I sent everybody a second iteration of the discussion comments. And there are two preambles or introductions to the legislation to consider. The second one, in the second one, I re-put in some of the language that was missing in the first, like we want to level the playing field. But I took out the last paragraph because I've heard from several people on the Commission, not just one or two, that they didn't think that that was appropriate in this particular legislation, given the areas we're talking about and given what we want to accomplish for this particular legislation. So if, I'd like to just open it up and I want to hear people's thoughts and comments. And I have, to keep it, to keep it equal, I'm just going to call on people to see how they want to go in order. And I'm going to do it alphabetically. And if I've screwed up the alphabet, sorry. Stacy? You're going to have to unmute yourself to talk. Stacy?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Rona. What, what, what did you ask?
I'm going to call on people alphabetically to discuss the second option versus the first option of the preamble. And the preamble or the introduction, basically, the difference between the two is the third sentence, the third paragraph of the first one is taken out. But the, but the intent of it and the wording about leveling the playing field was put into the second one. So the only, and the reason for that, as I wrote, is that the, that paragraph lumps the whole legislation together, basically, as being unfair. And it, and we don't want to say that. And we're happy we're independent. We're happy we have our budget. And it's parts of it that we consider unfair. And as I understand it, that Chair Kendall, after this round of legislation and budget is over, that there'll be a deeper dive into NACOC and other portions of the legislation. But right now, in two, in a week, we don't have a chance to really do that. And we have to get our amendments to City Council just to have something on record. Whether they are put or not is up to them. So I'm asking for your thoughts about one or two in the preamble.
Rona, before, you know, you go down the list and ask people questions, I wanted to know the full purpose of this and I wanted to know what the next steps are. So if you can explain that process for us and those who might be on the call who don't know necessarily what we're talking about.
You mean of everything or the preamble?
Of everything.
Oh, sure, sure. We had an ad hoc committee appointed by the Chair put together to address what we can as quickly as we can. We had two meetings last week to discuss different areas. And the people on the committee were myself as Chair, Cora Masters Barry, Kimber, Jose, Derek, and Exoficio was Kay Kendall. And what we, and then we had some people listening in as independent observers, which was Edmund and Gretchen. So what we wanted to do is put together some talking points that we could discuss and recommend as legislative amendments that, this would then go to Carl, the attorney for the Commission, who has more than graciously, and thank you, thank you, Carl, agreed to look at this and put this into legislative format with the help of Jeff and presented to Council for 2021. And the reason we're in such a crunch is the budget's already started and the hearings have already started. So if we're going to have any impact for anything at all, this is the time to do it. And basically, we have a week or two to do it. And, and so that's how it came about and that's what we want to do. It has nothing to do with looking into things further for a total ramping of how we want our legislation to read. Excuse me. But it's right now critical to just get something done. And the committee put these recommendations together. And in several spaces here, you'll see there's an "or." So it, it meant that the committee couldn't agree. And instead of just going, not that they weren't agree, they had different thoughts. So basically, rather than having just a majority vote, I've given you both. So the whole Commission can decide. As much as we had our discussion, you can decide. Is that okay, Natalie?
That was Quanise, sorry.
Quanise, sorry, sorry. I, I can't see. So whoever talks, okay. You have to tell me who you are. So the blind, so I can at least hear.
And so I.
Is that okay?
Did the Commission, did the, the City Council come to us or are we going to them?
No, we're going them because we, we want to have some things rectified and, and in the form of a legislative amendment. No, they wouldn't come to us. They're happy with what they have. They would be happy if no one went to them. So with that, can we start on the preamble? And I'm going to go down the list. Stacy?
I, I can't, I can't answer to whether, which one I would prefer. I would like to hear more discussion. So I would pass on my answer.
Okay. Cora's not here. Edmund?
Can you unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Ron, I like the first iteration with the third paragraph in because it just makes it very clear what our intent is.
I'm on that call right now.
Sorry, is that Cora? I don't hear who's talking. Oh, is that you? I don't know who, okay. Quanise?
Sorry, I couldn't find my, I have a lot of tabs open. I'm at work right now. But I couldn't find it.
I'm sorry.
I wanted to, to back up what Stacy said as well. So I'll just, I just want to hear more discussion about it and then I'll come back to that.
Okay, great. Alma? Alma? Can you unmute?
She did not, she didn't say here. I don't know if she's on yet.
She's here. She's here. She's here. I can see her. Alma, can you talk about the preamble? What your, what version you liked?
Can you hear me?
Now we can, yes. Can you talk about what version you, you? Say, say it again.
I prefer to. Two.
Okay. Why?
I love the wording. But. Should I have this process? Is this going to affect our budget? Are there budget implications here?
Not the total budget, no. Maybe a moving around of, in turn, of the monies, but not the total budget, no. Is that, is that all, Alma?
Well, other than moving money around that's in the dedicated tax funds, I have a problem if we're going there.
Well, can you wait till we get to those portions and you can tell us which one?
I would have difficulty with any of them.
Okay. Natalie? Natalie?
Yes.
Thank you. This is just about the preamble.
I think it's really important and thank you for, for pulling this out as something for us to speak on. I've spoken to a number of commissioners who have expressed the basic unfairness of having a pre-selected arts organization of, of wealthy arts organizations getting automatic, non-competitive funding. And so I think it's really important that we are on the record as a Commission to say how we feel about that. And also, this is not, this is not something that's new. It was passed well over a year ago. So I'm just wondering why this is, why this conversation is so truncated, you know, and sort of rushed when this is something that's been part of, you know, the Arts Commission, the way that it's been operating for the last year. So, so anyway, that's for me to say, a long way for me to say that I prefer the first, the, the language on the first one that, that got very specific about when we're talking about equity, what are we specifically talking about? So we, I think we've moved past the time, general statements of wishing for equity and we need to get specific about what we mean.
The, the only difference between the first and the second is it takes out that the entire legislation is systematically unfair, which is not the case and no one is saying that. And that's what I wanted to clarify.
I disagree, actually disagree with that statement. I'll wait till my turn.
Stacy, then wait, then wait for your turn. Right now, Natalie, I'm just talking about the preamble. And if you're talking about this legislation as a whole, what we need to do is give the Council what we want them to change. Just complaining about something isn't enough. But we don't have the time for the bite legislation, which is going in next week, to do it. It's, so what's, the rush is just to get this in and not change the entire legislation. But we're going to look at it another time to talk about the systematic unfairness about NACOC. But if you, or, or anything else that people see. But if you read the second portion, the last sentence of the, of the second iteration, it says, "Pre-selecting arts organization to receive a percentage of funding apart from the competitive process is discriminatory and unfair." That is a very strong statement. I don't know, you know, and we've written it boldly, "To stand on its own, two feet," without saying everything. You can't just tell Council, "Everything is unfair." You've got to point out what you want them to change because that's how change happens with the Council. But I just wanted to point that out to address your comment.
But the whole thing about the preamble is that the preamble also addressed, there were other organizations that don't fall under that, that were addressed in the rest of this document. So, you know, if we're talking about what is systematically inequitable, like we need to be specific about what we mean. And the second one was just more water.
Exactly.
Yeah.
No, but the second one answers your, I, basically, because of your comments, that's why the second one was changed and put in the way it is. Because we don't want to talk about everyone in that can one. So we don't want to say this legislation. We want, we wanted, we do want to narrow it down eventually. But, but rather, so we don't, we want to not say everything is unfair and all organizations or some organization. So by pre-selecting any organization, you're saying the same thing. So, I mean, I listened to what you said, so that's why that was done.
There's only one organization that's getting guaranteed money outside the competitive process. So why are we pretending like there's anybody else is addressed in this legislation?
Well, that's not true because there's.
Going back and forth about it because I'd like us to get to whatever. I know CC had, also had questions.
Kimber? Is Kimber not here?
She's there.
Mary Ann?
Kimber's on the telephone, Rona. I don't know if she can get on easily.
Kimber, can you get on this discussion? Patrick, is there a way to see if Kimber's muted or not? I can't, I don't know what number she is.
Yeah, because there's like 10 numbers on there. All of them are mute. But I'm unmuting Kimber now, so she told me what.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, now we can. Thank you. So we're talking just about the preamble. We're just talking about the preamble version one or two.
I'm, I got you. I've been following. So I, I'm, my voter recommendations for number two, I think we've, you know, Rona, I think the position that you've made and the points you've made, I'm in agreement with. I think we've addressed the specific, what we're requesting in the preamble is addressed in those first two paragraphs very clearly. And I'm, I don't think we need the third paragraph.
Mary Ann? I know she's there. It's just a, Mary Ann, can you unmute yourself, please?
I just unmuted her so she can.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick, for all your help.
Thank you, Patrick. I, I'm still trying to reread this again. I just don't like getting things the last minute like this. I know you've tried and we're under a tight timeframe. If, if I had to make a decision now, I probably would go to two, although part of me feels that I don't like any of them. But I still want to hear what everybody else says.
Chinadu? Is Chinadu unmuted? I, I saw him here, so, okay. Hi, Chinadu.
I like the version of the first one, you know, addressing equity. But I would like to hear more discussion about all the discussion that's interested.
Okay. Yosef?
Rona, can you just read what the preamble is so that I'm clear in what we're discussing here?
Do you want me to read the preamble out?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'll read the first one and then I'll read the second one. Would that be good?
Yes, please.
Okay. "As an independent D.C. government agency charged with the key responsibility of processing grants for the arts and humanities of the District of Columbia, our goals must be inclusive and always address the inequities, injustices, and systematic problems that plague our country today. We believe any legislation that governs the arts and humanities of the District of Columbia must be fair and equitable in the delivery of funds and support all artists and arts and humanities organizations." That's the first paragraph. Number two, "Pre-selecting arts organizations to receive a percentage of funding apart from the competitive process is discriminatory and unfair." Number three, "This legislation contributes to the systematic inequities that have plagued us far too long. In an attempt to level the playing field and repair the damage, CAC legislation presents for artists and arts organizations of a city, we submit the following." That are the three paragraphs of version one. Here's the second alternative to that version. "As an independent D.C. government agency charged with the key responsibility of processing grants for the arts and humanities of the District of Columbia, our goals must be inclusive and always address the inequities, injustices, and systematic problems. We want to level the playing field. Any legislation that governs the arts and humanities of the District of Columbia must be fair and equitable in the delivery of funds and support all artists and arts and humanities organizations." Second paragraph, "Pre-selecting arts organizations to receive a percentage of funding apart from the competitive process is discriminatory and unfair. We submit the following." So basically, it was, yeah. So do you have any comments or do you want to?
I just, I have, I have questions, just really, so I wasn't invited to be an independent observer of your committee. So I just have a couple of questions about the process that was involved in getting to this.
Yosef, Yosef, people just.
Hold on, Rona. I have, I have a question. I just want to have questions about your committee. So who wrote the first preamble that was originally submitted to us?
These preambles were written by Gretchen, Cora, and Derek. And then the, the, the alternative was just, I, I did, I didn't write it. I put the comments from our committee into the second one and all that did was take out a sentence or two. It's, nothing was rewritten, per se. It was the committee and the three people wrote it. I did not.
So what was the discussion in committee that led to the edits?
What edit?
Well, you said that there.
I'm not following you.
So, so clearly, there was an original draft that was sent to us. And then this morning, about 30 minutes.
I sent out the second. That's right. I sent out the second one.
So my question is, what was the conversation that led to the second draft being proposed to us?
Oh, okay, that's fair. The, the, we are discussing, the committee looked at capital projects, FAB, and NACOC in certain areas only. And it wasn't a deep dive into NACOC. So after reading and looking over the notes, the committee was only talking about a few points of the legislation. And Carl is going to write up very specific points of the legislation pertaining to certain areas of the legislation. So to make that consistent about what comes next, and we, I just took out this type of legislation because that was not our charge and that's not what we did. That will be done at a later time, but not right now. So it was made to be consistent with what was discussed and what is going to happen if we vote to send this to the legislation.
So I guess my, my primary question is, is there resistance to calling the, the NACAC, the National Capital Arts Cohort? Is it wrong? Is there some kind of disagreement?
We believe any legislation that governs the arts and humanities of the District of Columbia must be fair and equitable in the delivery of funds and support all artists and arts and humanities organizations." That's the first paragraph. Number two, "Pre-selecting arts organizations to receive a percentage of funding apart from the competitive process is discriminatory and unfair." Number three, "This legislation contributes to the systematic inequities that have plagued us far too long. In an attempt to level the playing field and repair the damage, CAC legislation presents for artists and arts organizations of our city, we submit the following." That are the three paragraphs of version one. Here's the second alternative to that version. "As an independent DC government agency charged with the key responsibility of processing grants for the arts and humanities of the District of Columbia, our goals must be inclusive and always address the inequities, injustices, and systematic problems. We want to level the playing field. Any legislation that governs the arts and humanities of the District of Columbia must be fair and equitable in the delivery of funds and support all artists and arts and humanities organizations." Second paragraph, "Pre-selecting arts organizations to receive a percentage of funding apart from the competitive process is discriminatory and unfair. We submit the following." So, basically, it was ju... Yeah. So, it, do you have any comments, or do you want to take a pass at?
I just, I have, I have, I have questions, just really, um, yeah, so I wasn't invited to be an independent observer of your committee, so I just have a couple of questions about the process that was involved in getting to this.
Yosef, Yosef, people just failed me.
Hold on, Rona, I have, I have a question. I, I just want to have questions about your committee. So, who wrote the first preamble that was originally submitted to us?
These preambles were written by Gretchen, Cora, and Derek. And then, the, the, the alternative was just, can, I, I did, I didn't write it, I put the comments from our committee into the second one, and all that did was take out a sentence or two. It, nothing was rewritten, per se. It was the committee, and the three people wrote it, I did not.
So, what was the discussion in committee that led to the edits?
What edit?
Well, you said that there... So, so clearly, there was an original draft that was sent to us, and then this morning, about 30 minutes before the call, we got a...
That's right, I sent out the second one.
So, so my question is, what was the conversation that led to the second draft being proposed to us?
Oh, okay, that's fair. The, the, we are discussing, the committee looked at Capitol Projects, FAB, and NACAC in certain areas only, and it wasn't a deep dive into NACAC. So, after reading and looking over the notes, the committee was only talking about a few points of the legislation, and Carl is going to write up very specific points of the legislation pertaining to certain areas of the legislation. So, to make that consistent about what comes next, and we, I just took out this type of legislation, because that was not our charge, and that's not what we did. That will be done at a later time, but not right now. So, it was made to be consistent with what was discussed and what is going to happen if we vote to send this to legislation.
So, I guess my, my primary question is, is there resistance to calling the, the NACAC, the National Capitol Arts Cohort, uh, is it wrong? Is, is there some kind of disagreement in, in, among people on this committee, the, the ad hoc legislation committee, that, that NACAC is not actually contributing to inequities that are systemic here in the arts?
That wasn't the, the discussion pertained, rather than call out one organization, we've addressed NACAC as part of the legislation in the second part of what we're going to discuss, but it's not the only part.
NACAC is not actually one organization, it's, it's a consortium of about 20, and one of them is actually, one of them is actually, um, you know, one of the, one of those organizations, a member of, of that board just actually voted for eliminating the language related to the NCAC. So, you know, that, to me, raises a red flag of conflict of interest to begin with, to say nothing of others who are voting against, uh, you know, including this language about NCAC, because they receive free tickets to theaters from NCAC organizations. So, I just, I just want to call that out, because I think that that's something that...
Can you say that again? I, I'm sorry, say that again, Yosef, I really want to understand.
Yeah, so, so the line that we are discussing in this preamble right now reads, "This type of legislation contributes to the systemic inequities that have plagued us far too long. In an attempt to level the playing field and repair the damage, the NCAC legislation presents for artists and arts organizations of our city, we submit the following." This is the line to our preamble to the proposed changes we want to make to the legislation. And what we're debating right now in this meeting is whether or not we're going to keep that statement in the preamble that I just read, and I'm, I'm, I'm saying that what I've heard so far are two votes against keeping that language in this preamble, and those two votes come from people who are connected to the NCAC organizations in some way. They have either, you know, accepted multiple free tickets from organizations represented by NCAC, and have gone on record in their testimony for reappointment, talking about that, uh, about how they support those organizations by taking those free tickets. And then, we also have a board member for one of the NCAC organizations who also just voted against including this language. So, I just want to be clear that these are the parameters...
Wait, I'm not, I'm not following. Who is the board member?
Does that, does that person want to identify themselves? Because I'm happy to call, call names.
Because maybe they shouldn't take part in this particular discussion, which is...
That's, that's, that's actually my point, and, um, you know, I, I think that that's something that we need to take into consideration if we're going to call a vote like this.
Okay, so who thinks they have a conflict of interest? I guess, I'm sorry, Yosef, I should have asked that first, I did not, I have the list of NACAC.
I think we need to be clear that NACAC is not one organization, it's a consortium of about 20. So, if you wouldn't mind, Rona, would you please read off the list of organizations that belong to NACAC?
Federal City Performing Arts Association, Cathedral Choral Society, Gala, Inc., the Washington Chorus, DC Wheel, Step Africa, the Choral Arts Society, Atlas Performing Arts Center, Woolly Mammoth, Studio Theater, W, Washington Performing Arts, the Wash... The trustees of Amherst College, which is known as the Folgers Shakespeare Library, National Museum of Women in the Arts, the Shakespeare Theater, Washington Drama Society, and the Phillips Collection. There will be a 21st member of NACAC, but that has not been voted on, so, on this list. So, that's what I have for this list as of, uh, three days ago. So, I don't know who there's a conflict...
So, I'd like to know, I'd like to know who, I'd like to know who on this board is affiliated with any of those organizations that you just listed.
You mean a board member, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, like Step Africa, who, who's on the board of Step Africa?
I'm not, so is, who's on the board, I don't know.
Rona, I don't know if I can unmute, am I unmute?
We can hear you, who's ever talking.
That's Kimber, I think.
This is Kimber, I am on the board of Step Africa, and I don't believe that that creates a conflict for everything else that's included in the documentation, which is in support of the adjustments and changes that we've made, which, which impact those pieces.
Okay, so...
And I'm happy to not have my vote included, if that makes you feel better, but I don't actually think that that, given the substance that proposed changes are there, I don't think that there's, it's clear by the support that I have of that position, uh, that I'm in support of the adjustments that are on the table.
Okay, then, if, if you're not thinking it's a conflict, then we'll have to take it at face value, because we're talking about legislation for 20 organizations that, and it doesn't pertain to your, but we're going to take the person's word at face value, I'm not going to start judging, so, is, is that what you're talking about, Yosef?
Um, I'm saying that there is, there's some issues here related to accountability, I feel. Um, you know, we're talking about the NACAC consortium, of which we have a, a member of this commission who sits on the board of one of the organizations represented by NACAC, who is casting a vote that could, you know, alter, uh, the proposed legislation that we are putting forth. Um, and so, I, I really want that to be taken into consideration, and, you know, if Kimber, as she stated, is willing to withhold her vote on this, then I, I would gladly accept that.
I don't think that's necessary, I think that came out of the blue. I think we have legislation that pertains to all organizations, not NACAC, of which...
Rona, Rona, you're talking about the preamble right now, and the vote that you're taking is on the preamble version, and one of the versions includes language specific to NACAC. So, please, let's keep to what you're actually calling the vote for.
I'm reading what you just said, and I certainly am keeping to one sentence that says the type of legislation. That's what I'm talking about as, as we're discussing it. If the person in question, well, that there's no conflict, at this point, we are not giving grant money, and she doesn't feel there's a conflict, I'm going to take that at face value and allow her to vote. And if you want to raise it later, so be it, but right now, that's, that's the, that's what I'm saying at this moment.
Is it because you counted your votes before the meeting?
And it's my understanding that, are we doing a vote right now, or are we providing feedback? Like, I, I don't know that we're...
No, we're only provide, we're just, we're not voting on anything. Each one is, everybody is having a say in the legislation and how it reads. It's too broad, and that's how several people feel about it. So, that's number one. And, Yosef, don't accuse me of doing anything you seem to agree with. Tell me your opinion, I want to hear it.
For the record, right, Rona, I was not one of the people that addressed that with you, so I'm literally responding to the message we got 30 minutes ago.
That's right. You did, she did not talk to me about it at all, so, I, I'm going to take that at face value. And, Yosef, if you have no more comments, can we go on to somebody else, or do you want to continue discussing the legislation on another point?
Um, you know, I...
Preamble.
I mean, if...
That's what I meant, the preamble.
I think the only thing I want to raise is, uh, you know, the issues that I've stated related to accountability and transparency in this process. The only other question I have for you, Rona, is, you know, what is the definition of equity that, that you're using in this, you know, uh, in this preamble?
I did not write it, we'll have to, Cora unfortunately is having surgery, so she cannot address that, and Derek, as I understand it...
As the chair of this committee that's proposing the legislation, I'm just curious, like, what definition of equity are you working with?
I was asked, I did not put this in, and I wouldn't have put in a preamble, period. Three people on, on the commission asked me to put in, I put in theirs with the understanding that everyone could have a discussion at the full commission for this. If anyone, if you want to define equity, we can do so, but right now, we're just trying to discuss what's on the table. As I said, it was given to me, I thought it was fair and equitable, and to me, in that sense, equitable means everyone has a chance to say what they think and believe about these preambles. And I put the second one in, so everyone's view would be heard, so, just discussing it, and...
So, inequities are also addressed in the, inequities are also addressed in the second draft of the preamble? So, again, you know, since you, you wanted to make updates, uh, that you felt better reflected, um, the position that other commissioners had come to you, um, I'm again asking you, what is the definition of, of equity that you're using in this updated draft that you sent us?
And I'm again, thank you, and I'm again telling you, I changed one part of the first sentence that, that talks about this type of legislation, because it was broad and doesn't account for what we discussed. Systemic inequities are still left in there, which other have written first paragraphs. Basically, the language of inequity is still less intact in the second one. If you want to have a conversation about inequities and the definition, you can, you can do so, but now, we're not doing it, because this wasn't my writing. So, anyone else want to talk about this?
You're the chair of this, you're the chair of this committee that's presenting this, like, how, how are you not able to address the definition of equity that is used in the preamble that is literally on the table? You're saying we're talking about the preamble, I'm still talking about the preamble. What is the definition of equity that's being used here?
If Derek and Cora, excuse me, if Cora and Derek was here, they can address it. Gretchen, you're here, do you want to discuss that how you used equity was just put into the preamble, and I gave it as, I was asked to put it in basically as is. Some people raised an issue that it was too broad. I took at a few words to make it less broad. It has nothing to do with the word equity, inequitable, unjust, systemic inequity, responsibility, goals, funds, or how we fund. That's, Gretchen, do you want to address, because you know how this was, or do you want to move on? It's your choice, you don't have to address it.
Derek, can you unmute Derek? He was, has been trying to say something.
I don't know if he's here, because he didn't reply that he was here.
Yeah. Can you tell us which number he's dial, because there's, I will have to, all the people, and he'll just start talking.
Derek, what number are you dialing from?
I just unmuted all the people, so I guess we'll know once he starts speaking.
Derek, and then...
Okay, this is Derek, I'm on the phone, and my number is 202-412-9130. And I, I, I worked with Cora as part of that committee to write the preamble, and, Rona, let me just correct you, because you did suggest that it was a preamble. I said before every resolution, what I wanted was to be clear that the reason that we are doing this is because the constituents and arts community in the district feel as though when someone's written into legislation, it is unfair. And that, and if someone needs the definition of equity, the way I meant it, I meant it as being the quality of being fair and impartial. And I don't think when you name organizations in a legislation, that you are fair and impartial, because you are saying these 20 people get a percentage. And I put NACAC in there, and I do like the first one, because let's stop playing games here. This is all around the CAC, or we wouldn't be having this discussion as a whole. I mean, this is what really annoys me. It's about NACAC, it's about that legislation. If it's not, what are we doing? It's about that legislation that takes a percentage of the commission's budget and doles 28% out to these organizations before we are able to do anything but funds. So, that's what we're discussing. I was asked as part of the committee, and really, I wasn't asked, Cora was asked to put together, it, on your suggestion, Rona, a preamble. I said I just wanted a statement before each of the resolutions, saying what we wanted to do, how we wanted to address the fact that the legislation speaks to 20 organizations and was not fair to the rest of the organization in the District of Columbia. That's what was said, that's what I said I wanted to do, Rona, you suggested making a preamble. We know this has to go before the legal counsel, Carl, to put it in the format that it's supposed to be in, to go before the legislation, and for the counsel to agree to take a look at it. Now, again, we were all at the budget hearing or heard about it. The chair of the council said he is not willing to look at the legislation at this time, maybe next year, maybe next fiscal year, but in addition to that, it doesn't mean we stand here and we're silent. We need to say, "This is how we feel, this is what we're hearing from the arts organization and the artists of the District of Columbia, and this is why we want you to either review it now, or put one of these particular resolutions into effect, so it adjusts the legislation just a bit." So, that's where we're coming from. Since I'm on the phone now, I'm going to tell you, I like one, because I don't understand why we're starting to tiptoe around, not saying who we're discussing. We're discussing the CAC, that's what we're discussing. It's in the first draft, that's the one that I did. I said I was perfectly comfortable bringing it before the board, but the one thing I do not want to get into, is I do not want to get into a lot of petty discussions about who sits on what board and how, because everyone on the commission board has an affiliation with the arts organizations in this city, which is why we're here. We're here in order to be able to speak to our communities and our arts organizations that are in our communities, that we know about, whether we sit on the board or not. This is not saying, if we were going to step out of the room and, because we were voting on something for a specific organization that somebody here sits on, that would be an issue. That's not what we're doing. We're saying, as a whole, either we have an issue with the CAC, or we don't. And if we do, we want to have some kind of adjustment, or we want to put them on notice that they should be reviewing it, because it is unfair. That's where we are.
Okay, um, this is Gretchen, you had asked me to comment, I wanted Derek to comment, because I think he has to leave. I think one of the rationale between rationals for changing A or B was the fact that what we're going to vote on submitting is not just NACAC, but also about FAB. But Derek is right, this whole, everything came to be because of NACAC. So, if we want to tweak it some, I still think we should call out NACAC, even if we want to tweak that we're adding some other things. They're rich, going to be talking about FAB, we're going to be talking about humanities, and that, if you read the first one, it doesn't indicate that, it just says NACAC. I do think it is important to keep NACAC, and I also would amend the first part that says plague our country today, I would delete today and replace it with "for far too long."
Okay, thank you. Um, is Mariah here? I'm sorry, is, no.
She's traveling.
Okay, we've heard from Gretchen. Um, Cece, sorry. Cece?
Yes. I'm not sure I could say it any better than Derek did, I appreciate his comments. Um, I, I vote for one as well, and just expand on the definitions, or not definitions, but I think, I think it's, as Colton also said, it's high time that we really address some of the injustices and inequities. I think it is important to say systemic. I think it also goes, maybe doesn't go far enough, because I think what the past few weeks and, and years honestly that have showed us, is that it's not enough to just be equitable, but we really should strive to be an anti-racist organization, specifically right now in the context of Black Lives. Um, as, you know, as a person of color, I think we do our best to be equitable in terms of diversity, and in terms of trying to be as diverse in as many ways as possible, but that's really not, um, I don't think that goes far enough when we're trying to address real issues of systemic inequalities through the arts. And I know that people might not think that this is the place where that happens, but it is absolutely happening, and we see it in our grants, or in who we don't grant, I should say. This, this cohort, I believe it is important to address specifically, but it doesn't, it isn't just this cohort. I think that it is, um, in many ways, what's sort of baked into the agency's granting practices, and so, I think this is the beginning of one of many steps that we can take to not just be striving for equity, but to be striving for, to be truly anti-racist and anti-discriminatory in all of our practices. So, that's all I want to say, but I do, I do think we need to stick to that language.
Okay, Gretchen, we've heard, is Jose on the phone now?
Yes. Yeah, hi.
Rona, I wanted to add one thing when you give back to me, please.
Okay, let me go to Jose. Jose?
I, I agree with Derek, number one, thank you.
Uh, Derek, we heard from Kay.
Um, you know, it's complicated, because I agree with all the statements that Derek made, but I was for number two, because I thought in this particular instance, is a preamble to the following three considerations. to the following three considerations. It didn't fit to have that last paragraph. But I wouldn't want to vote for number two, having that misunderstood is my thinking that we don't need to address the situation that I think is unfair within the Nakak group and that it was predetermined for us and it's not a competitive process. It's sort of that, so I feel like we're talking about apples and oranges. Particular preamble for this particular legislative tweak, I would go as number two.
We've heard from Derek, Jose, Kay, me. Okay, let's go back. Stacy?
Wait a minute, can I add something, please?
Yeah.
Okay, I just got her last text from Cora that says, there should be a line that indicates that this is not our last effort to eliminate the burden that's spelled places on the commission. And I think that's very apropos because we will be reviewing this over and over and over again until we get our systemic change.
Which, when would you add that to, number one or two?
I would add it to one.
Edmund, we heard for Quanee, no, I'm sorry, Stacy.
I was going to say that I'm glad I was able to glean information from the discussion. And so, I want to say that I would go with one based on Derek's comments.
Cora's not here. And Quanee, do you want to have anything to add?
Yeah, I just want to thank Derek for being so transparent about the process that you all went through for the committee. So, I'm, I would like to say number one, but I also agree with Cora's sentiments that this needs to be an ongoing process and not just stop at this legislation. We need to look at all policies and procedures of the commission to see how truly, true equity can happen.
Okay, we heard from Alma.
Can I say something, Rona? Rona?
I'm sorry, who's, wait, who's talking? Yeah, of course, go ahead.
I just want to say that what I don't want to confuse is that we do have a committee that's being put together and will launch soon. And it's in response to Cora's letter that called for action for a diversity and/or equity committee to be formed. And so, I think we're discussing some of those issues now, whereas this committee was asked to address some tweaks to legislation. They conflate, I know, but I don't want this to turn into a discussion this morning about something that we're going to have a whole committee to discuss in depth also. I mean, I appreciate everybody's comments, but I feel like we're mixing two things up at this moment a little bit.
I think Kay, this is Quanee. I think equity is the underlining thread for all of this. So, this does need to be discussed on top of us having that equity committee in full front. Like, this needs to be talked about in all of our committees, honestly. So, I do.
I understand, it's important. No, I do understand, Quanee. I just, I didn't, we're so, I understand, I do.
Okay, so now, we had Natalie, we had Kimber, we had Mary Ann. Do you have anything else to say? You said you wanted to hear. Okay, we had Chinadu.
Yes.
Do you have anything else to add?
Just, no, just, basically Derek was very clear. And my choices were the first one. And I think that this should, we should have an ongoing conversation about inequity. And I'm happy that we have.
Well, there will be an ongoing discussion about equity because we, there is a committee, as Kay said, and there will be outside members on it as well as commissioners on it. So, the equity piece is not going to go away. It's just being formed and looked at separately. Okay, and then, does anyone else have anything? It's, we need to move on to the other questions.
Rona, are you going to add the piece about the last, not our last effort to eliminate the burden so that they realize, pardon?
Second.
Just a minute, Jose. Nothing to second yet. I'm going to add it to the piece we agreed to go to, version one or two.
Okay, good. Thank you.
This is Quanee. I have a question. So, Derek mentioned that the council is not looking at this legislation this year. So, does that mean this is going to work?
No, no. No, that has been said, but it's been said weeks ago before all the protests and everything happened. So, I'm not so sure we don't have another bite of this apple. I'm not so sure now with what we're proposing, if we get it into council soon, they look at it. This, Phil told me personally that they're not interested in looking at it, but that was a month and a half to two months ago. So, what's happened in the last few weeks, I'm not sure they won't look at it now. So, I don't want to miss a chance to get some of this done.
So, Rona, so this is, this is my, you know, issue around that is that if we are going to the council and we're asking them to review this with an equity lens, why don't we go all the way? Why are we already saying that like there's, like, a lot of what these proposals that we're going to be talking about, they go around the edges, not allowing them to double dip? Like, when, at what point do we ask for full independence and?
When we have a deep dive into, when we have a deep dive into, we know what we're talking about. No one is, we've not done a deep dive into Nakak. We haven't looked at Nakak's legislation. We haven't looked at how Nakak is formed. We haven't done that. So, we have to have, you've got to get your ducks in a row. Right now, we only change and put into legislative terminology that which is already in the legislation, rather than just go for the whole boat. Let's, let's get something that we have a chance of getting. And then, when the equity committee is finished, you're going to be on the equity committee, as I understand it. There's other things that can be brought up there, and then you can go for everything. But the deep dive hasn't happened. So, I don't think you could people and ask the legislation when you don't have all the information. I think that's, that's in my.
This also is just sort of an issue that, you know, as I was raising before, this legislation wasn't passed yesterday. And so, I'm new to the commission, right? So, this legislation wasn't passed yesterday. There have been plenty of opportunities to have, to review it, to look at it, you know, and to form an opinion about it. And so, you know, I think that it's important for us, so we've gone through the preamble, you know, we'll take a vote on one or two. And so, at least there's a statement from the commission saying that how the commission feels about this, because I don't know that that's even happened yet.
Rona, have you identified any?
Wait, Mary Ann, just a minute. Natalie, are you finished? I want to give you, Natalie, okay, Mary Ann?
Have you identified any member of the council who's going to introduce this legislation, this amendment to the budget?
We're not there yet.
Because it doesn't sound like Mendelson is going to accept it. So, I hope we're not, I hope this whole effort is not just spinning our wheels if nobody's going to take on introducing this at the council.
We don't know that.
Rona, can I speak just for a sec, please? I think, I think it's critical that we do something now. I mean, three months ago, no one in this country or the world would have thought that we could have accomplished some of the things that have been accomplished in the last several weeks in terms of changes. Although we may not be able to change the entire Nakak piece or the Fab piece, there's one thing I'm very passionate about that we'll get to at some point on this call, and that's the Fab piece that I think we can make a difference. And if we can even get the council to talk about it and consider it, it will make a difference to everybody who is an arts or humanities person in this city. And that's the rent and mortgage relief piece that's not in that. So, I just don't think we should throw away the whole thing or not submit something without having the whole thing there, because we may be able to get some buy-in on a couple of things that will make a big difference to people.
I'm not suggesting that we throw away anything. What I'm saying is we should be working on identifying who is going to carry the water for us.
Okay, okay. Okay, let's vote. We have to, we have a lot to discuss. I'm going to call the roll and just tell me one or, we're voting on preamble one or two with the understanding whichever one you vote for, we're going to add the last sentence that Gretchen read out loud. So, I'm not going to add it now. I'm going to add it to the one that whichever one wins the vote. Stacy? One. Cora is not here. Edmund?
One. One.
I hear you. Quanee?
One.
Alma? Alma? Alma, you have to unmute. It's either one or two. You have to unmute, I'm sorry. Patrick, can you unmute Alma?
She's unmuted now.
Say it again.
One.
Kimber?
She may be on a call.
I'm sorry, with one. I'm sorry. I can't hear you.
I will support one.
Mary Ann?
One.
Chinadu?
I'm still down with one.
I can't hear you, sorry.
I'm still with one.
Joseph?
One.
Mariah's not here. See?
One.
Gretchen? One. Jose?
One.
Derek?
One.
Kay?
One.
And Rona is two. So, one wins. And can you just send me in writing Cora's statement or just send me her email or text?
She sent it to everybody. You should have it.
Okay, good. Okay, next, we're going to discuss the capital facilities and buildings grants, otherwise known as Fab. Year 2021, from the 17% of the annual budget pertaining to Fab, any amount over $3 million shall be allocated by the commission for various forms of necessary rent and relief, for mortgage relief. Let me explain what that is. This year, we have over $5.2 million. We have $5.4 million in our, in our budget. So, the first $3 million will be Fab as usual, is the easiest way to think about it. And then, 2 million, whatever's left, 4 million, 2,400,000 or 2,200,000, whatever it comes out to be, will go to rent and mortgage relief for the entire community. And let me, let me define rent and mortgage. If, oh, rent on a building that you rent from to do performance exhibitions or anything, that's rent. If you have mortgages on a building you own, that's rent. The other way of looking at it is if you pay rent, or if you have a home office, let me go back and can document that that office is for, that you pay federal taxes and declare it as a home office. So, with the right documentation, a home office would be included in that. And then, the second portion, which is really pushing the envelope, is to help everybody, which would be to, if you rent a facility for an exhibition, for a performance, for a show, for something, that will count as rent for 2021, which is, so, if you are XYZ organization and you're renting Six and I for a show, and you pay $10,000, that would be a deductible, that would be, I'm sorry, and it's deductible for you that you, for the year 2021, you could apply for Fab money. So, it's really a very, very broad definition of Fab for the second bucket of money. So, the buckets of five, to figure five and a half or six million would be divided, 3 million is normal, and the rest would be rent and mortgage, which is critical, as Gretchen said before, critical for our community. And that would include the broad definition of rent and mortgage, and that's the word necessary. And this is not something we will discuss today about what goes into that. That's for the Grants Committee and the staff to look at and decide and really hone in on how we can do this. But it's the premise that we can write up as legislation and really try to push with city council that we're, that we're discussing. So, it's number one. So, let me go down the roll again. Stacy, do you have any comments about that? Would you favor broadening the concept?
Yes, I'm in favor of that.
Okay. Cora's not here. Edmund?
Can you hear me, Rona?
Now I can. Do you have any comments?
No comments. I'm in favor of broadening it also.
Quanee?
I'm in favor of broadening it.
Alma? I'm sorry, Alma, you have to unmute. I'm sorry, I can't hear you. You muted again, okay.
I don't have any comment. I'm in favor of it.
Natalie?
So, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, now I can.
Okay, so, my question is, what are we, are we voting on one or two?
One stands by itself. Two has two parts to it. We're not at two yet. We're just at number one.
Okay, yes, I'm for this. I'm for this period. My own question is, I have a question about this, though. If the legislation says 17% has to be spent, of the grants have to be spent for facilities and building, why do we even have to get them involved in this? Like, that allocation's already there. So, why do we have to ask them to define?
No, the allocation is for the typical, the way we're doing the first $3 million. That's the definition that we've always used. So, we're looking for a broadening. So, there's no question that we have that right to do it. Kimber?
Wouldn't that be a policy, though?
Kimber?
I'm in support of it.
Mary Ann?
No comment, yes.
Chinadu?
I'm in support of broadening.
Joseph?
I just kind of want to touch on what Natalie was raising. I guess my, I share a similar question. Would this not just be a policy that we could enact rather than legislation?
Not, not to my understanding that, after speaking to our legal team and the staff, it has to be delineated. If the money goes for facilities and buildings and the definition is already there, we're looking to expand, so that's what has to be done. So, that's what we were asked to do. So, are you in favor of this?
I am, but I'm also in favor of us finding, I'm also in favor of us finding policies within our agency that can also address some of these things.
I think that, that's, that's, I don't disagree with that, but I think that's a different issue right now. So, you say you're in favor of just number one, is that correct?
That's correct.
Mariah's not here. Cece?
I just have a clarifying question because the legislation says 17% of the 77% that we set aside has to be for facilities and buildings or to the national capital area cohort, which seems to be left out of the conversation frequently. So, I just want to clarify, like, are we also suggesting that this mortgage and rent relief applies to all of the organizations? Or are we going to continue our efforts in being, in addressing inequities through Fab?
Cece, that's, that's number two. We addressed that explicitly, Nakak and number two. So, we've addressed that.
But I'm just saying, like, you're asking for a vote about something that's?
No, I'm not asking for a vote. I'm asking for discussion.
Well, you're asking if we want to expand on something. And what I'm asking is, forgetting about that cohort, if we expand for Fab, like, I guess my question is, what is $3 million of normal? Because nothing is normal right now. So, are we still saying, like, if people want to purchase, like, why can't the entire $5 million be available for whatever the community needs are with respect to facilities and buildings? available for whatever the community needs are with respect to facilities and buildings? I guess that's my...
That can be a recommendation, but right now, this is what the committee talked about, we talked about that. And there are a lot of organizations that would fall under non-rent and mortgage. They would just go there, putting on a roof, just call it the leaky roof syndrome. But that's, right now, this is what the committee said would be fair. It's not to cut out an entire grant and push it over to relief, but we're giving just about a little under half for rent and mortgage relief, which is very specific.
Sure, I mean, okay, so to speak to the issue at hand, I agree. I think what I also want the commissioners to think about is that we always, we seem to always talk about relief as a zero-sum, you know, game, like, either we're doing our programming, or we're doing relief. And the question is, we have $5 million in our budget that we are required to use for facilities and buildings. That's what the number, the math works out to based on our budget for next year, and based on the current legislation. So, my question is, why, instead of, I would just like to see us be as open and equitable as possible, and not necessarily delineate how much of the, we don't know how many of the organizations will actually need leaky roofs, and how many will need mortgage and rent relief. And I think starting the process off with these restrictions just is kind of maybe shooting ourselves and the community potentially in the foot. That's all I just want to comment on.
Okay. Gretchen? Gretchen?
Yep, sorry, yes, I am definitely for one. And just to comment, Cece, I totally understand what you're saying, but we have got to make some changes. And sometimes they have to be one at a time, and little by little. This is going to mean so much to people who can't go out and rent offices and have to work from their homes.
Jose?
No comment, and I'm in favor of it, thank you.
Derek? Derek?
I don't think he's on the line anymore, I don't see.
Okay, all right. Kay?
Yes, I am in favor of this. I just wanted to point out that this is an opportunity. We have a window, I think, to put this forward to the council. And because it's connected to relief, I think that we have a good opportunity for it to pass. And that's why we want to do it this way right now.
Okay, let's go on, before we vote, let's get all of FAB discussed within that one grand cohort. The second portion is...
Rona, can I just make one... Can we vote on this one before we vote on the next one?
Well, we can, it's fine, okay.
The next one has two parts.
Yes. I just wanted to say about the one we just voted on, that the initial discussions that we had about this actually started with our staff. So I want to give them some kudos on this.
Edmund? Quanise?
Yes.
Natalie? Kimber? Kimber?
Yeah.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Chinadu?
Yes.
Yosef?
Rona, just before I vote, I have another question to clarify. Why, what was, in the discussion among the committee, what was the hesitation to making this, all of the FAB funds instead of, instead of just the 3 million?
When? Because when the staff brought this up, and they looked at all the people who had FAB, and the chart was, we looked at who, you know, people are getting FAB. We don't want to cut out and stop FAB completely and change it. And if there's a chance to really get this done, if we leave a lot of what the council put in place alone, and then ask for really extended relief for mortgage and rent in this climate, I think we have a chance to get it. If we start changing everything about different pieces of legislation, I don't think we're going to have a chance. So if we want to do something next year, we can, but we're only talking one year, 2021.
I just think that that's a little bit of a weak spot of this board. I mean, this is the time to be pushing for as much as, as much as possible to be changed, especially systemically. You know, if it falls on the council that we are, are saying as a board, that we want all of the FAB funds to be available for necessary rent and mortgage relief, then it's on the council to say whether or not they're going to stand with the Arts and Humanities Community of Washington DC in the middle of a pandemic. And so I think that it's important for us...
This is how they voted, so you can vote this down, or you can vote it up. How do you want to vote on just number one? And we're still going to discuss number two and three, which addresses some of your points, but I'm talking about number one, to add rent and mortgage relief as a piece of legislation, as a law.
I'm symbolically voting against this, because I think that we can be doing more, we can be doing better.
Okay. That's how, that's why I voted against the preamble, for the same reason. Okay, Mariah's not here, Cece?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Jose?
Yes.
Derek? Kay?
Yes.
And I'm yes. So that passes with yes. Okay, number two. Grantees within the COC shall be eligible to receive any grant funding from FAB, grant program, or any funding from the 17% of the annual grants budget allocated for FAB. That's number one. The alternative to that is grantees within the COC are ineligible to receive grants in excess of $600,000 per fiscal year, including funding from the cost percentage and FAB funding. So let me just say what the thinking was. There are the different ways to look at the money that's going to the COC just regarding FAB. That's all we're doing, is just regarding FAB. So one is that they don't get any FAB money, is how that boils down to, whether it's rent relief, mortgage relief, program relief, or anything. The second is, they get grants, they get their 28%, that's not changing next year. And how they divvy up 28% from different organizations, some get large amounts, some get small amounts. So we're saying $600,000 is the limit, and then they can, to get FAB funding. So that's, those are the two areas. So you can leave them in FAB, or you can't, or you can leave them in FAB with a limit. Now, don't, the other thing you have to realize about FAB is not, that's only for people who have offices, home offices, buildings, or any kind of rent that they pay. So those are the two discussion areas. So Stacy, what's your thought?
And this would be outside of the 28% that they...
That has nothing to, this has nothing to do with this, this is just FAB. Nothing to do with the 28%. This is, grantees within the COC shall not get any money from the 17% or FAB. Or, including the 28%, they can't get more than $600,000.
I would say number, the first one, then.
Okay. Okay. Edmund?
I agree also, the first one, that they're not eligible.
Can I ask a, I'm sorry, can I ask a clarifying question that maybe the staff can answer? Because there's money involved that I think is important.
Why don't, no, why don't you wait your turn, please? I want to go down, I want to have it, because we have a lot to do. Quanise?
People can't vote unless they have the information, Rona.
They're not voting, they're just giving opinions. No, we're going to go back for a vote, this is a discussion. Yosef, I'm purposely having two points.
Information to a discussion. Just let her introduce information if this is a discussion.
She can, just wait her turn, because other people may have some more things to say. You can introduce whatever you want, when it's your turn, you can do that. And then we're going to go, we're not voting. So, Quanise?
I'll hold my opinion until I hear everyone's.
Okay, Alma?
I am in favor of them not being eligible for additional funding. However, Rona, I think this grant also includes things like sound and those sorts of facilities, you know, that are needed. It's not just the building and the rent.
That's right. That's right. It could be sound that they're hiring people to do, it could be sets, it could be orchestras, music, it could be people in the community. But, so, how does that pertain to A or B of number two? How, I'm not sure I understand that.
I just wanted to make clear that this is a little bit broader than just the buildings and the rent.
Okay. Okay.
What it can be used for. But also, I do not think they should be eligible for additional funding.
Okay. Natalie?
So, I agree with everything that's been said, and I just want to clarify that this CAH legislation from the council not only gave them 28% of the grants funding, it also specified that some FAB funding goes to the COC.
It says, I'll read to you the legislation so there's no misunderstanding. 17%, this is from the legislation, 17% for grants to capital, to, from capital projects, which is FAB, in support of either Arts and Humanities Cohort, which is our regular grants pool, or the COC. So yes, it gave them both, and we're trying to say...
So we're asking them to remove them from that?
Yeah. That's, yes, or set a limit, yes, that's choice.
And I would just, I just want to also say, so I agree with what Alma and everybody said. I don't think they should be able to get access to it too. But I think this is the reason for, like, you know, reconsidering the COC cohort altogether. I would not have a problem with them getting grants in multiple categories if they just compete for them. You know, like, that's, I mean, I think if you have, if the money is there, they should be able to apply for them. But it makes it, you create this equity situation if they're already getting guaranteed money. So I think it's unfortunate, because there's a lot of great organizations in the COC, and they have facilities needs like everybody else. It's just, it's created this, you know, the way that this other 28% has created this situation where we have to do this. And hopefully they'll recognize, you know, that it's, you know, I thought hopefully everybody will recognize that this is just better for everything, if it's just under a competitive process.
Well, that, so do you vote for one or two? Because under the second portion here, that's competitive, it's...
Well, they're not competitive, so there's no way for that even. So I think it's going to be one, because it's not, like, unfortunately, it's not competitive. They already have money, so that's it.
I, that's true, that's true. Kimber? Kimber?
She's on the line.
We can come back to her, Mary Ann?
I'm passing right now.
Chinadu?
I'm going to hold my thought, I want to hear more discussion about this.
Yosef?
I'm also going to wait until I hear the information that Cece wants to present.
Cece?
I just have two clarifying questions. So the legislation you read says either Capital, excuse me, Arts and Humanities, or the COC, right? That's what the legislation says?
Either/or, so that means and apply for both, so that means the money's open to both.
No, no, you're right. So it's already implied that if the organization, if the agency doesn't want to fund that cohort, they can choose not to fund the cohort, right? We're voting on something that's already implicitly in the legislation, right? Just want to clarify that.
No. It says by law, they are allowed to apply. And we're saying, take that or, no, we're saying, take the or part and the either out. So it all goes to the commission.
But for the purposes of just moving forward for the next fiscal year, and I agree wholly with what Mary Ann said about, like, if we don't have someone to carry the water for us this year, we're trying to vote on something that's already implicitly in the legislation, right? It doesn't say FAB has to go to Arts and Humanities and the COC, it says or. So that already is implied that it's either/or.
Cece, may I interview, this is David.
Oh, actually, I do have one other question, maybe you can answer both. So the second question, because I like to deal with finances, is we are legislated to spend a certain percentage of money. If we exclude a certain cohort, will we still meet those goals? Like, and I think that's a question that David can answer, because I also don't want us to get into a situation where we eliminate cohorts or organizations from being able to apply for grants that could benefit people in the community, and then subsequently not meet the legislated percentage that we have to meet for these funds. Like, I don't want to have to be returning funds because we weren't able to spend them all. So, David, if you could...
Before David speaks, part of that was, number one, we're opening it up to mortgage and rent relief. And that's really critical, because that, and performance relief. So that's going to add more money. David, can you please address that?
Of course, yes, thanks. And so the legislation is very specific in that it says that the FAB dollars can be used for a purchase or renovation. And we did look into our own legislation, we looked into the city legislation with regard to fixed assets in the shape of buildings. And so we did want to blow it out, so we made sure that we were, we actually could include mortgage and rent relief. And as Rona said, this was something that we've been thinking about before COVID even happened, had to allow for particularly smaller and small to midsize organizations to allow them to on-ramp into FAB. Particularly, they don't have their own, they don't own their own spaces. But the legislation does, again, it's very specific in that it says that FAB provides competitively awarded grants to the National Capital Arts Cohort and the Arts and Humanities Cohort. So it's not an or, it's an and.
It is and, okay, that's what I wanted to clarify, that's not...
That was pretty intentional, so.
Sure, okay. So the other part, there would be, there would be, we aren't looking at a scenario where we won't meet this percentage criteria, is my concern, because I, obviously, we don't want to return funds.
And that has been a question for us too, that if for some reason we receive fewer applications for renovations or purchases, and only spend just a $2 million of the $3 million that is set aside, talking about setting aside, what would happen to that additional $1 million? Could it, A, roll into, you know, make the pot for mortgage and rent relief bigger? And or, now that we have, our funds are non-lapsing, does it just roll into FY22? So I don't know if, with this legislation being pushed forward, is there, is there a little bit of wiggle room to increase the rent and mortgage relief pot based on what comes at the door in the sort of the traditional model so that more dollars can go into helping more organizations this year?
Right. And the committee, and the, I meant, just to finish David's thoughts, Cece, we discussed in the committee that if the, because you did bring that up to me, that if the 3 million wasn't met, Cece, we did consider that, then it rolls over into the, you know, the rent and mortgage portion.
So I guess I'm just curious, I trust that some scenario planning was, like... planning was, like, 3-2 is a very kind of general split, right? So, I'm just curious, like, in these times of, you know, these pandemic times where a lot of organizations, you know, may not be in a position to do large renovations or purchases of buildings? Like, I guess it goes back to my earlier point as to why we didn't just kind of have an inclusive FAB cohort as opposed to trying to break down. And I get your explanation of it, that we don't want to eliminate people from moving forward with renovations or purchases if that's what they need. But I was just wondering, like, if that's the sentiment or if that's the feedback coming back from the community, like, they still need FAB for, excuse me, if they still need FAB for, was, you know, what was stated as normal funding purpose?
Well, as Alma pointed out, FAB is a much broader definition. It's sound. It's not just fixing leaky roofs. It is just so much more. And given the definition of how we've used it, if, the best way to deal with it is if there's not money used, it goes over into rent and mortgage. So, it goes over into the 2.5. And so, that's, we don't want someone who's in the middle of renovating to say, you can't get FAB money to continue. That's really-
I understand. But I think that the example of sound is also a little bit misleading because people aren't even open right now. So, to-
That doesn't mean they don't pay their sound technicians or their actors or the healthcare or the rent or anything else.
But a sound technician is not FAB. That's, we're like conflating grant categories now, like-
Construction can still go on right now.
Construction is part of FAB. And I just think-
My point-
Okay. So, now we're up to Gretchen. Gretchen?
Sorry, I'm with the first one. Did they be ineligible?
Jose? Jose? Okay, Derek?
I don't think Derek's on the line.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Kay? Any comments?
Absolutely. I want to put some things in perspective. For years, our FAB had a very small budget. And one of the byproducts of that were a lot of earmarks. And so, when we got legislation that gave us a good ability to actually fund the community for their construction needs or their FAB needs, whatever they were, it seemed like a good thing. It seemed that it would eliminate earmarks that were only available to a certain few and open this up as a really competitive process for the whole community. So, I think that having this FAB open to everyone to apply to is really what I thought our first goal was. I would be against telling any group that they can't apply to FAB ever because it's a different category than general operating, and it should be there for everyone. That, to me, is equity.
So, Kay, would you be in favor of letting FAB apply and then having a limit or something else entirely?
I think definitely anyone in FAB. And that includes so many variable organizations from small budget, actually, to larger budget. And who knows if even any of them happen to want to right now. But as time goes by, I would think being in FAB should not keep you from applying to, I mean, being in the CAC should not keep you from applying to FAB. So, my-
So, you're saying number two?
Yes.
Okay.
It's perfectly fair to say that a group that already gets money sight unseen should not be eligible for other money that's supposed to be for other people who don't get a sort of, like, a highway pass to our budget, a significant portion.
She called it equity. She called it equity.
It's equitable to allow anyone who needs to apply to FAB. I think it should be open to anyone.
But to anyone, including a group that already gets money set aside for them, a significant amount of money?
CC, that's her view. So, let, this is just getting people's views. And that's her view.
It should be open to everyone.
I agree. You're right. You're right.
I just want to say that's equality, not equity. So, I just want to make sure, when we ask what equity is and how the commission is using it, this was a prime example of equality versus equity. So, I think we all need to learn what equity means so that we could be on the same page when we use that word.
Well, let me say, I meant that I thought it should be an equal opportunity for any organization to have the opportunity to apply for FAB. I don't think there should be qualifiers to keep people. I think the qualifier should come in guidelines. For instance, it might be that any organization can't apply more than two years in a row or can only get X number of dollars as a total, something like that. But I don't think that belongs in legislation. And anyone who wants to apply should be able to try to apply and be competitive.
Okay. Any other comments? And my thought is, I'm gonna, I believe, number one, I think that we're talking only for 20, right now, we're talking 2021, and hopefully, the council will look at it. And I think if NACOC gets 28% of our budget, and I was looking at the list of everything that goes for FAB, and some of the very largest organizations, just to give you an example of my thinking only, is Women in the Arts. It's an incredible amount of money from us. And I think this year, to level the playing field and make it more equitable, I don't think any money from FAB should go to NACOC for next year. So, does anybody have any more comments or thoughts for discussion before we take a vote just on number two? Is there anyone who didn't speak who wants to say something now or or hold your peace? I can't, I can't. You got to tell me who it is.
Hi, Rona, this is Brian.
Hi, Brian. Do you want to, you want to jump in?
Just a quick comment or based on everything that I've heard. I think that would be paramount to add to any legislation that you're pushing forward should be some sort of caveat that you can put into the budget as pertains to grants that would enable you, once you meet the threshold.
Say it again. Say it again. You went out on me.
Okay. So, I think that there needs to be something added to the legislation which says that we're able to move funds from one cohort to another. And it's at the agency's discretion, meaning the agency and the commission. And because when it's actually just legislated at 17% into FAB, then that doesn't give us the ability to move the funds to another cohort as the agency might need to navigate towards. So, my-
Agreed. 100%. Thank you, Brian.
100%. I love, yes, yes, absolutely.
I think that would serve you better as opposed to trying to delineate or maximize what amount is going to the CAC cohort or the organizations in the CAC. Put some sort of legislation or some sort of language that gives this board or this commission the authority to move funding from FAB. For, because from what I understand, if you only get applicants totaling $3 million, what happens to the other $2 million? It has to float on to the next year. And based on what this commission is trying to do, I think the easiest thing to do is ask that the council give you the flexibility of moving the funding as you see fit.
I think that, I think we should add that to everything we do, that we have the ability to move funds from one cohort to another. But I do think for next year, we should keep NACOC out of this because there was a great discussion at the committee level, and this pertains to NACOC. And it answers a lot of people on the commission who don't want NACOC to get additional funding. So, for next year, this is, this is what, but I also, I also think that if money is left over from any amount of FAB, it should be able to be moved over. So, I don't see why we can't do both for this, just for this legisla, just ask the question. I think it's a very good idea.
Could I just add something? I mean, Rona, this is something that you've said several times, is that we can't get to the NACOC establishing legislation. And actually, we can. We can, we can do whatever it is that we would like to do. And if there is an interest from this commission and, like, it seems like it's the elephant in the room. And it seems odd if we're not directly saying that we need to have full independence over our budget. Like, it's strange to ask the commission, the council, anything other than we're independent, we should be able to make independent decisions. Like, what, when you, when you create a set aside for one group or one cohort or whatever, you're not independent. And so, and I don't think it's that much to ask them. And so, what I would like to see is that we not go in there limiting what our ask is and what our expectation is as a public body in charge of CC taxpayers' money.
I think the committee was formed to look at three areas, which Gretchen mentioned several times to me and to others, that was raised at the last commission and voted on. So, right now, we're roding on three very specific pieces of legislation. If you want to add another one, let's finish this and then add that, add that on. Or you don't have to vote for it, but I need to finish this.
This is what I'm saying, is that when we, when I asked for the agenda, you put out the agenda that had the establishing legislation that made the commission an independent commission. And now you're saying, now you're saying, now you're saying that the charge was very narrowly defined. So, when Yosef and I spoke about this at the last public meeting, I mean, the way that we talked about this publicly in front of everybody was very broad. You know, we, there are some issues with the way that this legislation was written. So, I don't know how we all of a sudden, all of a sudden, we came to where, okay, well, we can't talk about the elephant in the room. And we can't make any-
I'm not, I'm not saying that. Natalie, what I'm saying is talk about it with knowledge and understanding, which you don't, and this, this body doesn't have yet. We haven't looked into, as everyone has said, the elephant in the room turns out to be the CAC. Fine. But look into it and understand how it was formed, why it was formed, the history of why it was formed. And we can deal with it, and we're going to do that later. Right now, we're trying to get some-
You, so you, now you're saying that we're not informed when I've actually done a lot of my own due diligence. I've been talking, I've had many conversations about this, you know, and again, it's like a year later. To not, no, to say that a year later, nobody has looked into this and that we have to kick it down another year, is, that's just not, like, you've, you've made a decision to limit it there, and then I'd say just own that decision, that you've just decided that we're there and not touchable.
It's not accurate. I was asked to head a committee, an ad committee, looking at three things. And that's what we did. That's what we did. It's not my decision. It was, the committee was set up by the chair to look at three things. And when I sent out the legislation, it's so you would have the direct wording of those three things. And if you hit the agenda, that's what was on it. I understand that you may have more knowledge than a lot of people, a deep dive into what exists. But everyone on the commission doesn't. And all that information should be disseminated and talked about before people just say, let's just do it and vote to eliminate something or add something. That's all. I'm not saying-
If, I just have a question. And maybe this is for Kay, since she is the one that convened the commission, to convene this committee. I think what Natalie is asking and what some of us have been asking isn't, how do we go to council and renegotiate the budget as it already stands? We're asking, or I'm asking, and maybe others are asking with me, is why can we not, if we are, if we are supposedly an independent agency, and I always say that with air quotes, is we have no financial control of our budget. It's legislated how much we can spend on grants versus operations. And while I have no issue with that necessarily percentage, it's best practice. The fact that percentages of our budget are legislated, and then further, percentages of the budgets that are legislated further are given to certain cohorts of which we have no control over who is and is not in that cohort. So, the question really isn't, how do we, like, if we're just talking about a basic negotiation, we're starting at our lowest point. You usually walk in there with, like, you want, you know, the whole buffet. And then you whittle it down to where you can compromise. We're not even coming in with what we could fully ask for, which is potentially control over our budget. We're saying, okay, you gave us this, which many of us agree isn't fair. So, rather than sort of jigger what was, what's already there, why can't we just say, hey, we are, if we are truly an independent body, give us control over our finances? And I don't mean control in terms of the money they give us or how much they give us. I know that that is, you know, not in our control. That's brought down from the mayor. But how that money is spent should be within the purview of the staff and with the commission's oversight. Like, that's how an independent agency runs. So, I think the question that we're asking is, why is that not our starting point? Why are we starting with, let's just tweak this already sort of inequitable budget? And I understand that it might be because we're trying to just get some wins, but like-
Yeah. Can I address this, CC? Because I agree with what you're saying. I think what we're doing right now is a bit of a mismatch. I mean, we do want to be in control of our budget. And I think all of us were disappointed that there was legislation that took that from us. Right now, though, this committee was formed because we had an opportunity with asking for some money for rent and not just building and construction and FAB. That was the initial push. And it did come from the staff that said, look, we had this opportunity to expand what we can do for the community by giving them rent relief. And that seemed like a good idea. And there's a window that makes that legislation look very promising if we push it because of the response that everybody has right now for wanting to give relief to the community. This bigger thing that you're talking about, which I think a lot of us are for, we didn't feel was going to happen right now. And so, we wanted to take our time, ask it correctly, think about it, work through it, maybe next year. The committee right now is formed for this one rent relief. It sort of segued into a couple more things that we're not talking about. And no, they're not really addressed. I mean, it's hard to be for, I'm not for them as they're written because I don't think they address what we really need to address. But they address maybe something that could happen right now, maybe not.
So, just for argument's sake, let's say we, because I keep going back to Mary Ann's point about who's gonna, she's gonna advocate for on the council. Let's say we make no progress with council and a bunch of people apply for facilities, grants for rent and mortgage relief. We can't just say yes? If it's, if it's per the, if it's within the discretion-
No, no, I think, I think we'll have to get some buy-in so that we can use some of that FAB money for rent relief. But I do think that we have a very good chance for that.
Buy-in from whom?
The council, so that the legislation that's written-
Her question was if this, her question was if this legislation doesn't go through, can't we just create our own policy?
I don't think we can, but I have a lot of hope that this legislation will go through as it certainly, at least, is it applies to the rent relief part.
This is Gretchen. If I could just say something. I agree. We are not going to get the whole ball of wax. I think we've got to put something on the table. And then I think each of us, in our own way, will try to have discussions with people and see if we can push it forward. But at least we'll have something in writing that each of us can present and talk through the same way.
Can I ask a question? Are we still prohibited from lobbying?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, you cannot lobby. You can suggest, you can talk, you can discuss, but you cannot lobby.
I didn't use the L word. I said discuss.
You have to make the distinction between lobbying and discussing and suggesting. Okay.
The law, the law is pretty clear on what lobbying is. And there are laws, and lobbyists have to register. But as commissioners, we can have discussions about this pretty easily. So, but-
Can I just say, in the context of this conversation that, you know, equity has come up in, I think it's really rich, and the pun is intentional, for people to say on this call that, you know, we're not going to, we know we can't do, get the whole ball of wax. We should have our own conversations with people on this side. You're assuming a whole hell of a lot of privilege from a lot of people on this board. You know, I'm certainly not a wealthy white woman in Ward 2 whose husband gives money to, you know, council members. So, I don't have access to have these conversations with people.
Unnecessary. That was an unnecessary comment. Totally inappropriate comment. Keep it professional.
My, I didn't mean anything. So, I don't know where the offense is coming from. But my point is saying that, you know, we-
Be professional. And you do it at every quote goes to be professional, please.
Will you you're the one shouting Gretchen. So talk about professional. Take a seat. My point that I'm finishing.
No, 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 no. You are out of line. You you are out of line, Joseph.
Marion.
Patrick, please mute everybody. Patrick, can you mute everybody, please?
Excuse me, that's illegal. That's illegal. This is a public meeting.
No, Joseph, I just want you to. No, it's not. You were talking and I want you to finish what you're saying. I don't want everyone charming in. It's not illegal. Just just everyone. Joseph, finish your comments without everyone screaming.
The point the point that I'm trying to make here is that we as a commission, as a body, need to take a bold step here. And it's really downright shameful that there are people on this commission who are so privileged and so out of touch that they're not even willing to try to push on behalf of the community that we're supposed to be serving. And I just want to be on the record saying that that that's the case. That's what we're dealing with here.
That, okay.
For all the talk about equity, for all the talk about equity.
Joseph, have you finished?
Equity that certain people. No, I have not. There's, you know, we've been talking about equity that certain people on this board can't even define. So, you know, I think we need to start at a base level in terms of equity.
Can you unmute me, please?
You're unmuted, Marion.
Okay, thank you. I find that 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 discussion and that approach totally inappropriate, insulting and out of line for this commission. You do not attack commissioners. We are all here to make things better. All finding struggling to find ways to improve what we do. And I want to commend the people, Rona and the other people who've been on this committee who have tried to come up with recommendations and to insult a specific member of this board is absolutely outrageous and out of line. And I find it totally, totally inappropriate. And I believe we used to have rules that we could condemn a commission member for for performing the way this is the way he's been been forming. I I will not accept that kind of discussion from him. It is totally, totally wrong and out of line, insulting. And and I would like to find out from our our general counsel if we still have the provisions about the decorum and way that people are supposed to be presenting themselves and discussing issues on this commission.
If I could just respond to that, Marion, I understand what you're saying. And I agree that we should all conduct ourselves professionally and that sometimes these ad hominem's are not necessary. But I think if we go down this route where we're basically calling people out because we're offended by what they're saying or how they say it, we completely lose sight of the real issue that he's bringing up, which is still a valid issue, which is that we're trying to talk about equity. We're trying to talk about addressing systemic inequalities within our grants. And the fact that we're not actually doing that is a little bit problematic. And I just would like the commission to commit ourselves like I understand that we might not get anywhere with council, but are we still committed to supporting these initiatives that we've raised? Like if a if a if a grantee comes to the grants committee and and raises the issue and says, we do not have the capacity to pay our rent or mortgage, and we need to apply for a fab grant, like, are we going to give them the cover to do that? And I think that we should. And I think we should stand by them. And I don't think people in council are going to come for the grant staff and say, oh, you didn't. You know, you you gave this money away for relief during the time of the pandemic, but it's not actually legislated for you to do that. I don't I don't see that happening. So I think while we have real fights to fight, I think the question is, what are we doing to address some real needs in the community? And I think it's good to vote on things, but I think it's also important for them to be actionable. And I I I think that that's what we're trying to do here. So you know, I'm not I'm not. That's that's all I have to say. I just I really just I think it's important.
Okay.
Please, please.
I do with all my heart. Second, what what Mary Ann said. Because when somebody and, you know, I am tired of the little smart remarks. And I will say clearly that normally always come from Joseph. I am sorry, we had rules that we do not allow that. And there should be a precedent set. I have been attacked. Several people have been attacked. Let me just finish this part. It is important when somebody, one commissioner, and on a public public meeting like this, like we had others, when somebody specifically says a white wealthy woman whose husband donated to the city council, I am sorry, that is targeted. If somebody would say, there are some commissioners who might not understand or think that's different, is the wording, and this needs to stop. We all make the time to work together. And I am fed up with Joseph's constant interruptions and assumptions and entitlements. I am sorry, this needs to go on the record. It needs to stop.
Amen.
No, oh, he is attacking. And it's several of the ladies in this group, which is unfair, because those people make the time to be here and they care as much as he about equity and everything that goes on. And that goes for the other people. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Okay, to get back on track. I, right now, wait to bring us back to voting on number two, which is the purpose of this committee. And we can add something else if you choose to do it after, but move on. So we get everything looked at and discussed. Mary Ann, I agree with your point, Joseph. I think, Joseph, that was rude and really uncalled for to anybody personally. You want to talk about equity, which means fair and impartial. You've got to learn what that word means yourself. So let's look at number.
Let me just add something to this whole discussion. I have been called Quanise, or Quanise has been called Natalie. And this is the second meeting where this has happened. You know, I find that to be. Let let me say, but well, I find that to also be offensive. So so let me just sort of like, there's a lot of things that people find offensive. And that's very relative. And I think we should let's let's move on because I know we have a bunch of other things to go. But I just I just couldn't let this pass without sort of pointing this out. That Natalie and Quanise are both African American commissioners. We are two totally different people.
I think it's ridiculous. If you if you if people can't see you and you're muted, it's very hard to understand with the background noise what's going on. And you know, Natalie, that no one is calling you Quanise or Quanise is.
This is the second time. This is the second meeting where it's happened and different commissioners have done it in different times. So anyway, let's move on. I just while people are being offended and wearing their offense, I just needed to put that out there.
Okay. Stated and in the minute. Can we vote on number two, please? We're voting for the grantees within National NACOC not to be eligible or that they have a limit of 600,000. Stacy, what is your vote?
I vote for number one.
Okay. Let me write this down. Okay. Edmund.
Number one.
Quanise.
One.
Alma. Natalie. One. Kimber.
She had to get off.
Okay, Mary Ann.
One.
Chinadu. Chinadu.
One.
Okay, Joseph.
One.
No, Mariah. Cece.
I'm abstaining.
Gretchen.
One.
Jose.
One.
Derek. Not here. Kay.
I'm going to abstain, too.
And I vote for number one. Okay, the number ones have it. So that's that. The next part of Fab is the Humanities D C. Can you please, everybody mute? The next part is the Humanities D C shall not be eligible to receive funding under G O S. All funds not used shall go back to us, basically, and not just roll over for their use as they see fit the next year. And how this comes about is that they are under the legislation. Five, and I'm reading directly from the legislation, five percent for the Humanities Grant Program. So in 2020, that was 1.160, and in 2021, it was 1549. And in addition to that, they applied for G O S and got more money. So basically, they could have two bites of the same apple for using G O S money. So what we're saying is if money isn't used, a simple thing is to look at it backwards. It it just can't keep rolling over because then we can use it for our arts and humanities for other grantees. And that goes to Brian's point that we can move from one cohort to another, including legislative pots of money. So that's in the fiscal year. So let's have discussion on that. Stacy, this is just for the humanities who get part of our legislative money. And this year it's 1.549. So let's, what do you think?
I'm in agreement with the statement here.
Okay. See. Edmund. 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 We'll come back. Quanise.
I'm not in agreement because because I believe that Humanities D C has access to a community in which the Commission of Arts and Humanities does not have access to. And so I do not want to take that away from them. So I'm saying no for now.
Both parts that you so if they have extra money, you don't want to see that come back?
No, I wanted them to keep it.
Okay. Alma.
I don't know at this point.
Okay, Natalie.
So my my question, so I my feelings about Humanities C C are put out in the memo that I sent to everybody. And so I I wanted to know why is Humanities D C being put under this preamble and we're talking about equity, issues of equity?
Because they're part of the B S A. They're they're included in the Budget Act. That's why they're being addressed is my guess.
Right. So if we're so if we're talking, if the preamble is talking about what are the issues of equity? Then I'm not sure how they fit into that. This is a grant making organization. They were also chartered by the National Endowment for the Humanities versus the National Endowment for the Arts for our agency. They are a smaller organization. Why we feel the need to micromanage them or or limit what their ability is to get access to our huge pot? It's it's under the name of equity is just not clear to me. So, Rona, I guess you and maybe there are other people who are on the committee. Can you guys talk about why this is an equity issue?
I can't. There was a real loud second noise. I couldn't hear what you said. Can you please repeat that?
Yeah, I just wanted to hear from people who are on this committee, you know.
Okay, I see.
Why is how is Humanities D C of in concern when you're talking about issues of equity and access and increasing access?
We were because how it started was pretty much based on the legislation. It was five percent for humanities. We looked at the legislation. And we said, if we're looking to take NACOC and limit what they get for Fab and look at what other people get, then you have to take the the la this basically how things are distributed, then you have to take the last legislated piece and say five percent that would that's given that was lobbied for that's automatically given should be looked at. If the commission, as we vote, decides that we don't want to include it, we can just say, vote this down. It's pretty easy, but it had to be rolled up and discussed.
But what I I guess the question is that if so, again, like you, you're making a decision about what parts of this legislation you find abhorrent. And I I haven't found like all the rationales that we've heard about what makes NACOC problematic from equity standpoint. I do not see that addressed in this either the preamble or anything that's part of what this what this you know, what we're going to be voting on where it happens to come to Humanities D C. So I would like to hear specifically, what is it about Humanities D C that is that is problematic? Like they're they're an agency that has human, they do humanities programming. They have a competitive process. They're not giving money. You know, they're able to, as Quanise said, they're doing things that further the humanities mission. And we're the Commission on the Arts and Humanities. So why, how does it help us as a commission to put strings or limits on what they're doing? And also, if if you apply for a grant, the commission can say no to that grant. So why do you feel the need to go to the council to give you the the ability to do that?
Natalie, this is David. So I work with Humanities Council. And just to give you some context, their grants for FY20, they will not be able to execute everything before the end of this fiscal year. So their timeline rolls into next year and significantly so. And so I've already talked to them about moving into FY21. Is there a way that we can sort of meet in the middle and sort of have them sort of pull their programming and their grant making back into alignment with us? Because what ends up happening is by the end of October this year, when they're required to submit a final report, they will not be able to do that, which makes them out of compliance with our agency because they haven't expended all the funds.
Is it because of the?
Sorry, go on, Cece.
Is it because of the pandemic, they're not able to to have to get the funding out for its original purposes? Or what what is?
I think that hasn't helped, but just their timeline for rolling out their grant programs is very different to our timeline. So and so we've talked about, you know, how we can get the money to them as soon as possible. And they've talked about pulling back their timeline. So I'm not advocating one way or another that we decrease their funding because they do, you know, two thirds of they the they received 1.16 million dollars from us this year. And and two thirds of those dollars were regranted to small humanities organizations and individual humanities practitioners. So they are doing meaningful work. It's a matter of just sort of, as I said, trying to bring them more into alignment to protect them. So that they.
So so I'm not sure why, I mean, so why do you think that it's the why is it our role to hold them into alignment? They are they are an independent grant agency of their own. And part of the idea that we get denoted sales tax is that we're they are also doing humanities work. They don't necessarily have to do exactly what it is that we say and dance. So I I guess I'm I'm not understanding why, why does, why do you feel the need to hold them and have money? Yeah, why do you feel the need to have this amount of control over what they're doing?
Because we are as a commission, because the money is coming to us and we're granting it to the Humanities D C that we are responsible for for that money and ensuring that all organizations adhere to the timelines that are mandated in their grant agreements.
Is it a matter of timing the the granting and the the rollout of the money? Or is is there some other reason why there that they might be out of? I I know you're not making a suggestion or recommendation, but I think your information is really helpful for us to make a recommendation. So if we agree to whether we agree or disagree to cut the funding, I know we'll have significant ramifications later on. So I just if you could just flesh out a little bit like what you were saying about if they if they are out of compliance, would we just be getting giving money out that would then have to be returned? if they, if they are out of compliance, would we just be getting, giving money out that would then have to be returned down the road?
You know, they, they would have to submit a formal request for an extension. And then they just end up having overlapping, you know, they have funds from one year that are significantly overlapping with the funds from another year. I think part of it is a timing as to when we get the money to them, their own rollout. I think part of it is a capacity issue for them. Just based on what I know of the organization and the number, they have a very, very few grant managers. They do a great job, but it may be a capacity issue because their funding from us and their overall organizational budget has increased pretty significantly since last year when they had a budget enhancement grant from us. So we want organizations to be successful. We really do. You know, I had looked at the numbers and, you know, based on what they received from us through a large $1.1 million grant and their general operating support grant this year. Moving forward, if we were to keep their funding flat for FY21, that would be the equivalent of 4% of our grants budget.
So what we decided to do in the committee, that came up, Cece, of should we just say they should get 4% and not do anything else? So we said, let's keep it the way it is, but let's not them get a double grant of general operating. So what's that, that's going to do is let them be in compliance, hopefully, with David's help and let them move on, but without getting GOS, and then we can use that other money for other organizations. So it was, it was a technical reporting and financial issue. It's not a matter of overseeing an organization who gets legislated money.
So just to clarify, they currently get four, I just wanted to clarify, they, they get four, sorry. If I just, they get 4% of the grants budget.
No, they get five.
Okay, so they get 5% of the grants budget that's legislated in the BSA and they are eligible to apply for GOS? And the recommendation is that we keep the budget, the BSA, but then they are no longer eligible for GOS? Correct. Okay.
Because they're getting GOS. Yeah, that's, and with your analysis, that would make sense. You know, so we could get, you know, with the staff help and figuring this out, that's really a very safe way to go to protect them and help them succeed rather than having to worry about it. And if there's extra money that they can't use, rolling it over isn't going to help if they still have the next reporting problem the next year. So this way, we'll get it back and being able to use it. And they get a fresh pot of money that they can then divvy out the following year.
But we just want to make sure that we're not in this situation every year that we're always giving them a no-cost extension or we're asking for money back. So.
So the question that I have here is that, like, this year is something, we are in a very unusual year right now. And why the Arts Commission feels the need to be able to microman, it's very patronizing to say that we have to sit here and, you know, like, we have the ability to say, if they're applying for GOS, that they can't get it. So again, it's like, you know, why you feel the need to sort of queue them up and sort of single them out under this equity frame, I just have a major problem with. So this is, if we're looking at ways to expand the mission, then you continue to expand the mission. You don't put limits on organizations who are doing the work.
We're looking only at the legislation and the, and they have already been singled out by the legislation. So we're looking to help. If you just listen to David's report, we're listening, we're trying to help the monies for an organization that's getting 5% as opposed to just putting it forth to the commission. Why don't we just give them 4% and let them get GOS? Because it's our money. We're responsible. It comes to us. We have to supervise this. And it really becomes a problem when organizations can't spend the money. So we're just trying to make it a little easier for our organization as well as theirs. And they got a huge increase. So hopefully, they'll be able to spend it and use it.
I guess I'm just, I don't understand how limiting what they can be qualified for helps an organization.
It's not limiting, they already get GOS, but to get it on top of it, they can't, they're not going to be able to spend all this money next year. So we want the money to be able to use it ourselves in our arts and humanities cohort to give it out to other grantees. And that's how you do it. We have to do it legislatively. And I don't know how else to explain it, Natalie. If you just, it's, David has really explained it succinctly. Mary Ann?
You're muted, Mary Ann.
I can't hear you. You're muted, Mary Ann. Okay, you're not muted. Go ahead.
What, what I wanted to be sure is the money that they would return back to us that they didn't spend, we would then be using for our humanities cohort to fund, to fund programs in our cohort? Or can it be used for anything else?
It's our arts and humanities cohort. It, we have one cohort. It's called Arts and Humanities. And that's what it would be used to fund. Yes.
So we're not really taking, necessarily taking money away from humanities programs. It's just that we would be funding them as opposed to the fact that the humanities commission could not fund it, fund, fund programs.
I can't say in all honesty, it would only be used for humanities. That's a staff and a grants committee decision. So I don't, we're not voting on that. We're just voting on.
So it could be used in other areas, the money they give back to us?
Only in our grants and humanities cohort, which is 50%, the legislative body, the city council gave us 50% for grants to use in the arts and humanities cohort, 50% of our budget. It goes into that cohort. Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
So let's, can we, if there's no more discussion, can we just take a vote on this, please? Stacy is no longer, yeah, I'm sorry, Alma.
Was there also an issue of duplicative funding so that we were both funding the same agencies?
We looked at that, and I believe there were half a dozen duplicative grants that went out between the humanities agency and ours. But if we looked at the dollar amounts, they weren't, they were 10,000 or 15,000. It wasn't large enough to make any difference. So it was so minimal. The committee, this ad hoc committee said, let's not take away any money. And if somebody gets a little more, they get a little more.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. This is Quanise. Do we still have quorum? Because this meeting was supposed to go to one and I have to go back to work. So I was just wanting to make sure if I left that you still had quorum.
I don't know. Kay, do we have a quorum?
I haven't been watching that for just a second.
We do if Quanise leaves.
I also am going to have to leave as well.
Okay.
You both can't leave, so.
I think you better.
You both can't leave. Can we just, can we, let's just vote quickly. Okay, Stacy's not here. Cora's not here. Edmund? Edmund? Quanise?
Nay.
Alma? Alma?
Yes.
Natalie? No. Mary Ann?
Yes.
Chinadu?
Undecided.
Well, you have to vote. So it's either abstain, yes or no.
Abstain.
Yosef?
No, I don't think we should be cutting Humanities DC.
Cece?
I'm going to abstain as well.
Gretchen? Gretchen?
Yes.
Jose?
No. They do a good job.
Derek not here. Kay? Kay?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So we have one, two, three, four, five yeses. One, two, three, four, five. Does that give us a majority or not? I don't know how many. I haven't.
Does Kay vote unless there's a tie?
Yes. No, she can vote. She's not ex officio here. So she's part of a commission. I think five would have it under this, wouldn't it?
Okay, you're. It's five and five and two abstentions, so it's, that's a lock. That's not a, that's, that's a stalemate. That's not a yay.
We have one, two, three. I only have four noes. One, two, three. I have four noes and I have Chinadu abstaining and Cece abstaining. So I have five and two.
I'm voting yes.
Okay, so, so the yeses have it. Okay, the last thing I just quickly want to do, if you could just quick read it and we can go through this. All, this is accountability. And all I'm saying, how this is written by the committee is, anybody who is in the CAC who gets money from us under any category whatsoever has to give us a midterm report, an annual report, a review. And then the commission of the staff, as they usually do with other, every other organization, reviews the organization's artistic merit and excellence, positive impact on the district. And the second part of that is the accountability that any money they get, they don't get to keep and it doesn't roll over. It's the same thing with the humanities. So I'm just going to say, if anyone has anything to say, say it because we, I don't have, we don't have a lot of time now.
I just want to, I just have a procedural question about the last vote. Does Kay, so when does the chair vote?
The chair votes as part of a commission unless she's ex officio and she's not ex officio on a commission.
If, I mean.
But she was ex officio on this committee, though.
On ad hoc, because, yes, because it was an ad hoc committee. That's correct.
So would she vote?
Yeah, not in the ad hoc committee, only in a full commission vote. Yes. So does anybody have, what about the NACAC, the last, what do you think about the eligibility, that they have to do all the reporting and the accountability and any money not used, go back to us? Does people have comments about that or we can just vote?
I think that we should take this as an opportunity to continue addressing equity. And I think that as part of the reporting, we should be hearing from NACAC, who's on their boards? You know, what, what is, what are their efforts look like towards, you know, inclusion at the levels of leadership on that level? You know, I think that we should really codify some of what we're looking for in terms of, you know, these grand ideas that everybody's talking about, but let's put some action and meaningful teeth behind them.
Other people have any statements that they want to make?
I agree with that. I think we, you know, we, there's been a lot of conversation about a cohort that hasn't had an opportunity to speak to the commission. And if, if we are going to go forward with this, I think they should have an opportunity to be heard if we are talking about, you know, at least we can vote with a full, with full understanding and knowledge.
This is only asking for reports, how they spend the money that we have to give them. That's all we're asking them to do.
That just seems like extra paperwork, like who's, why?
No, they do it anyway. Cece, they do it anyway. David has said that they do that anyway. But now we're asking, the, the real extra here is that their artistic merit and excellence. In other words, the, the review of what we give our money for, the staff does the normal review like we do for all grants. There are site visits and everything else. That's all we're saying. We're just including them in the regular grant pool of how our money gets spent. And having them come to talk to us should be part of a deeper dive into NACAC.
I, I don't know if we, do we have, it looks like Natalie left. So do we still have quorum? Can we table this? Or we might have to table this?
Yeah, I think this can be dealt with on a committee, like, grants committee level or legislation, maybe.
I just don't, yes, I don't know that we need to vote on something that they already do, if that's the case. Like, if they're, if we're wanting them to report on something that they haven't.
Okay, then the, the thing that really matters is that they give the money back to us. That has to vote it on because that's really going to be a piece of legislation that, that they can't keep the money and roll it over for themselves. Do you have anything to say? So we can table the first accountability, one, fine. And what about the second?
Rona, this is David again. So an organization can apply to us for a no-cost extension. And it's up to the commission as to whether or not be granted and for how long. We do want to help set organizations up for success. And I think, you know, this year, we, we're dispersing $1.265 million to Humanities DC. If we adhere to the 5% number for next year.
We're not, we're not talking humanities. We're talking.
Okay.
We're finished with that. We're talking a cock number three. About.
Okay, I apologize.
Keep money that's, no, that's okay, that they can't keep money to roll over.
Yeah, I haven't seen it so far. And there are large enough organizations that they're, they're able to spend the monies because.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's my point, too. Like, what is the likelihood that that's even going to happen?
Next year, it's likely. I've spoken to some people and it's likely. They don't think they can do the programming they want. But if you want to table it, it's fine. This is a safety valve for us to keep the money if it's not used. That's all it is. It's not taking away money. It's if they can't use it, it comes back. But if you wanted, so would you want to table it or move to a vote with it? That's, I don't, whatever.
We're going to have to table it because I'm about to jump off the call and there goes the quorum.
Okay, so then this is tabled. So then we have our votes and we have what we're doing. And I will write this up and then it will go to Carl to put into legal terms to present to council.
Thanks, Rona.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rona.
Thanks, Rona.
All right, Rona, I'll, just as far, I'll, as soon as I get your written memorial, I will immediately adjudge this one of my top.
Okay, thank you very much, Carl. What I'm going to do is cut and paste from what we decided today. I'm going to take out the alternatives. I'm just going to say what you have to vote on, okay?
Okay.
We have to write up, and I'm sorry, not what we already voted on.
Yeah. No, I, no, I understood. So I'm going to, I'm going to be leaving the office. I'll still be working, but I'm going to leave the office in about 20 minutes. I'll get my wife from a doctor's appointment. And once I get back home, I'll turn my attention back to this.
Yeah, but it may, it may happen later today because I have other things I have to do.
Oh, no, no, no.
I have another doctor's appointment. I have to go somewhere, too. Okay?
No, yeah, no rush. It's on your schedule.
Okay, today or tomorrow at the latest. Thank you.
It's on your schedule. Okay, see you later. Bye.